Welcome to official SL TV channel. Please don't forget to subscribe to my channel and share my video and press the red button. Please help me to share my video.
This is very important. Fambul good morning, Fambul good afternoon, Fambul good evening. And of course, Fambul, today, that Tuesday, October 29, 2024. Ladies and gentlemen, fellow SIA leaders. And of course, being at the People's Power or the poor people's media. Fambul, we listen to the People's Power over the weekend, a lot of things them happen. Within get for do to Dr. Samoa Kama and that of the All People's Congress Party. And a lot of other issues them come up. Quick one, we just want for make Fambul. Come, make sure see them listen to a lot of other things them we be happen. You know, I guess what you see would be now the line, quick, quick now the program. So that we welcome, ask a one or two questions them. We, a lot of people they get out, so we want for clarify and can see within now the problems them. Which a lot of things that we, we they can discuss now, yes, hello.
Hello, good night.
Hello, it a cancel low, it a cancel low, why you say you do body?
Hello, good morning, People's Power.
Yes, why you say, how the morning? I saw you bring you very early to Nunaia. That we get a lot of issues then, so we, we want for clarify and we want for see within now the fact of them issues then the. One way get for do to information, who we get see? The APC Party Secretariat, they write letter to Dr. Samoa Kama for go before the Nak today. I don't know if I get the date correct today if for go Nak. But we don't know, waiting they call Dr. Samoa Kama for, but a lot of whom of the, they talk about office keys and all of that. So you want for take with us through that letter there before we come to the security?
Thank you very much, People's Power. Thank you for giving me the opportunity. I can't talk about if this, the possibility don't become a face of the struggle for restoration of democracy in a SIA alone today. The possibility don't become a recognized figure internationally as one of the people them. Where they fight for ensure accountability, where they ensure, where they fight for ensure see people their votes be counted winner Dr. Samoa Kama. I'm glad we give me this opportunity, I would say thank you. And I will say to you, yes, indeed, there was a letter sent to Dr. Samoa Kama for requests, for request in presence that the party office. Yes, the letter go to Dr. Samoa Kama, the letter reach to Dr. Samoa Kama. And then things say the executive of the APC, then, then, then publish on our social media. First of all, People's Power, I want for say the letter itself, now one way, meaning, now one way, you awarding them, we not forever come out now. The APC executive to Dr. Samoa Kama. The letter itself, now one way, meant for undermine the fight for electoral justice. Now one we meant for undermine the ongoing dialogue for able for resolve the election dispute. The letter get warnings like former flag bearer. And the letter go without an agenda. The letter go, go meet Dr. Samoa Kama without an agenda, you know? You know, you know, you know, attach any agenda to the letter. We go to Dr. Samoa Kama. And we, we the support Dr. Samoa Kama, find this very, very offensive. Find this a deliberate ploy for undermine the peace in SIA alone. For undermine the efforts we Dr. Samoa Kama they make for make sure see SIA alone able for resolve the issues in a peaceful manner. People's Power, the executive not do this for any reason, now for help Madabiu escape justice. Now for help Madabiu and in government escape accountability. Now for help Madabiu and in government escape the current talks. We be go on regarding the agreement for national unity and that of the trappatite agreement. So for we, we think say it is very shameful at this point that the party they write and refer to the presidential candidate, former presidential candidate of the All People's Congress. And I think say that is one of the sticking points. Because what you we know, what you you know, what you everybody know that Dr. Samoa Kama is the candidate until and unless another presidential candidate is elected for the APC in whatsoever time and whatsoever future. We can go for elect another presidential candidate. So for, for, for we, we find the letter, we go to, we lead, we win at the face for the fight against democracy, we find them very, very offensive for said list.
Mr. Wari say, that letter we you talk about, within that letter they mean to democracy. Because we clearly, it don't, not to, this not to secret again. You understand, we don't clearly no see the national executive of the APC Party and Dr. Samoa Kama don't really see yai to yai. Because within and within the two parties and the fight for now two different team. The party they say, okay, well, there we left these elections, law we move on, law prepare for 2028. Dr. Samoa Kama say, no, we still get a lot of issues with 2023 elections. We, elections results not the from neck. Saloon people, they don't know whose side they vote to, they need for know whose side they vote to. To me, understanding this meeting we then called Dr. Samoa Kama. Now for let them go, forget about the 2023 elections, let them move on, they not even they talk about again.
I know I for interpret within the mean, but within the now the letter like that. Or one party character in the within the letter that they want for who discuss a transition. So, I mean, we talk transition. It difficult for let anybody understand, which one called the one they flailing. You, you the swing, you know, they here another there.
What, what, Mr. Wari say, what you mean they want go discuss transition? What in that they mean?
That, that, that is, that is the big word we they put, that they, they, they letter way ambiguous. And cause they require proper clarification for good, for, for, for make somebody. That is what you end up for, for be attached to the letter, where they for did the what in and go for talk, what in go for happen. For me, I think say, yeah, in it, the letter, like you ask me earlier, People's Power. It undermine the more executive, where they ask them now publicly, they go tell you see, oh, they the support electoral justice, or they the fight for electoral justice. Oh, now then they fight for the APC people them. But at the same time, they the fight for pull the rug from under Dr. Samoa Kama in, 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 in foods, the person where they make effort for ensure see electoral justice and electoral accountability happen based on the agreement for national unity and based on the trappatite recommendations where we don't agree on them. Based on the facts, the international community, the moral guarantors, they still engage in the two parties them. So this issue or this dispute around the elections in 2023, they resolve in a most amicable manner. So if this party, they, at this time, they call the presidential candidate former. And at the same time, they call him, then they call him for go discuss a transition. It is, it is an effort, it is an effort on their path for derail the process, for derail the dialogue, for derail the ongoing peaceful settlement to the crisis, to the political impasse. So I think say we find them very, very unfortunate. We think say a party not for they behave in this kind manner. The party go for take, go for they take responsible stance. People's Power, me and you know, that this very party, this very executive, that they sit down together with Dr. Samoa Kama and other people, they put together the recommendations. They put together the recommendations. We then send as part of the trappatite recommendations. We add to the 80 recommendations within the inside that particular document we then present to Madabiu, now State House, where Madabiu sign, we Dr. Samoa Kama sign. So this executive, not even they ask about any recommendations, where they been put inside that report, where they send to Madabiu, where in a State House, where the international community does see a recognized. What I mean now, the joint recommendations, the 80 recommendations and APC, they your recommendations. They are not even talking about the APC recommendation, rather than they undermine deliberately the process. So this desperation for we, it give we the sense, say, these people directly, they undermine not just the effort of Dr. Samoa Kama, but they also they undermine democracy in SIA alone. They also, and this, and this why it is shameful, this is unheard of, we know ever the year they can't see they around the world. This are the first term where they can't see they happen, now, 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 we body politics. And this is 21st century, for God's sake, this is the 21st century. People that go for understand, say, in the 21st century, you practice politics civilizingly. With, with civility, you practice politics for ensure see you represent the people them in an open and transparent manner. What are they hiding? What are they hiding? I, I, I've been asking these questions similarly. What is a executive hiding? What are they afraid of? Why do they want to protect Madabiu this far? Why do they want to protect Madabiu this much? What is it? What is it that, that is hiding? Now, now this to go for they talk about People's Power, what in they hide? What in they hide? When she call me for this topic this morning, I decide for grab, it's four o'clock. It's about four o'clock in, in, in the USA. I decide for talk to you, now because of the fact, say, it is, it is shameful. Enough for they happen, enough for they happen at all. This is the 21st. The days of, then, then politics, they don't over. The days of the politics, they don't pass. In fact, People's Power, we forefathers never practiced this kind of politics. Because we forefathers, and I mean loyal to the political party, they mean loyal to each and every comrade where they within the political, where within the political system. The A C, the APC, one of the two we political parties, they not ever practices type politics of deliberately undermining the efforts of the party. They not ever practice that policy. Removing the rug from under the young presidential candidate in the middle of a dialogue, in the middle of a talks, it is shameful.
I think see, we, we the get problem with, why you see, in line, the Fambul, the voice where you just the listening, you the listen to Alaji Mohammed, why you see? And of course, we based now the United States of America. We the talk a lot of things them concerning Dr. Samoa Kama and the APC Party. We, Dr. Samoa Kama, think today, the Nak column and the things they were there for go discuss just the quitting, why you see, they talk about transition and all of them thing they do. Why you say you do body?
Yes, I didn't you.
Okay, why you say, what in me want for say to Dr. Samoa Kama? This is very, very important and then things they are then discussion. To me, I go advise, I don't know what you wanna think and what you other people they think. If Dr. Samoa Kama they go now the meeting, let them make sure see, let the entire world know what in then they go discuss now that meeting day, lay it day in the record. And instead for make sure see, it go to people them, where they put every statement where people they make, lay it day in the record. Instead, everything where it they talk now that meeting day, lay it day in the record. Let the entire world know what in then they go discuss and that. Because why make I the talk, so we go wake up one morning, Dr. Samoa Kama go the, then the APC come and begin say, oh, now this Dr. Samoa Kama don't go agree. Now this we don't go talk, evidence not the, but we not go come see Dr. Samoa Kama come now the media can challenge, you know, not to so I see, I know they talk this, I know talk that one they. So for make a good day now the safe aside, we go advise, make you go now the meeting. And when it a go now the meeting, let it make sure see, from when they start the meeting with prayers. When they start out prayers, say, then they end out prayers. We for know everything, where they go discuss and that. Everything for day now video, for day now audio, for day in a written form, in any kind way, any way they do. Anybody we ask question, we for know who that ask the question and who that answer the question. Waiting Dr. Samoa Kama would talk, waiting the party would talk and waiting day now the agenda and all of that one in the, why you say, what you think?
I think say that it makes so much sense. And I think say, Dr. Samoa Kama don't reply, the executive, they don't reply in party for, for letting, yeah, second clarifications, I not go out for discuss that one. Because I know Dr. Samoa Kama as a civilized man, as somebody we, we highly matured and we, we highly knowledgeable, I realize say, in not publish, in reply, we send to executive. But the executive don't go ahead for publish, then you letter we then send to Dr. Samoa Kama. So I don't have to talk about Dr. Samoa Kama, the details of in letter. However, Dr. Samoa Kama has done an appropriate reply to the, to the party. You know, for us for starting clarifications before he go attend to.
What, what in that then, then it's like indication there, we Dr. Samoa Kama don't ask for to the party?
I think, I think it not important, sorry, not necessary for me, because Dr. Samoa not publish a reply. But what I learn now that it don't send a reply to the political party, it don't, it is sick, starting clarifications with me, not the, now the position for, for, for talk about right now. However, I know what you they talk about, I understand the experience where they come from. When the, the, the spokesman of the party go now SLBC and go talk plenty, plenty about, about how Dr. Samoa Kama have been doing at the meeting with international moral guarantor. Akama not say nothing. Let me ask a question. The, even as, even as a media, we don't go rogue. It is just natural for SLBC for not ask CDR Tunis. You guys, did you invite Dr. Samoa Kama to the meeting? First of all, show we evidence he be invited Dr. Samoa Kama to the meeting. Secondly, you guys, did you have Dr. Samoa Kama on the agenda for the visit of the international moral guarantors? Who now show you evidence when I get them? And any journalist, any journalist, whether they pay you or they not pay you, if we able ask. Because what in do, CDR Tunis, he talk to people away 10 times smarter than us. 10 times knowledgeable and experienced than us. The other thing we therefore ask are is simple. The chairman, where even he talk? Did he ever call, did he ever mention the name of Dr. Samoa Kama? To out in discussion, let alone for say, oh, Dr. Samoa Kama as presidential candidate for the APC, would he give the, 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 would he give five minutes for let you make a statement in, in the presence of the international community? Did, did they ever do anything like that? Therefore, not simply ask CDR Tunis. But you know, the media, SLBC, like I say, it's two governments, it's two governments, sorry, two parties, one government. You know, it clear, say, the executive, they undermine deliberately all the efforts we Dr. Samoa Kama. And Dr. Samoa Kama, not to that kind on civil person, we go go now meeting, they not call him, you know? They not, they not ask him, they begin talk. So I understand the background where they come from, I understand the unfortunate statement where this spokesman for the APC go make now SLBC, where the journalist, they say, say, where they he? They not, they not, they not, they not think say, therefore ask them questions and they with very legitimate for let CDR Tunis answer, say, yes, we invite him, yes, we put him on their agenda, yes. In fact, we not even get, the chairman, they ask him talk for five minutes. Because this whole thing we they talk about, they cannot detach Dr. Samoa Kama in any way ship of form, from what in they go on, from the own, from the current dialogue. It, it's not just possible, it's not possible, it's way off the cuff. So, so the, the smartest way they go do now, now for let I understand, at this point, say, Dr. Samoa Kama is pivotal, it's pivotal, he is, he is the, he is the up and down, which are that way they? Of the talks, where they go on, of the dialogue where they go on about the 2023 electoral, um, 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 violence where upon that, around the electoral mishaps where upon around the. People's Power, a lot of thing that don't happen, a lot of thing that don't happen. If this is not settled, 2028 or whosoever, when whosoever go for get election, it's never settled. If this not settled, nobody in SIA alone will settle. Because we will not allow this to pass without it being settled and people being held accountable. It's not possible. And people go for account for their vote, where they deliberately steal. We will not ever, we not ever see, even the days of the one party system, one X to the steel election. This can at the 21st century. For me, I think say they making, they not making any efforts. The best thing, best for the executive, now for follow the line of the people, of the grassroots. Now for follow the line, Dr. Samoa Kama, for should the fact say, he is a recognized flag bearer until such time, when they get another flag bearer. Just like that, just like, like them, Dr. Samoa Kama was elected presidential candidate of the APC. So what in at the desperation for make then try for impress themselves, let's say, oh, he is former presidential candidate. He is former, that, then in this, the grassroots for the give for reply to the executive as former officials, as former executive. Because now they all like elect at the same time. And as best as we know, as best as me and you know, the APC not get another delegate conference yet, who said it who elects the members them. So what in that this rush, what are they doing, what are they hiding? It's clear that these people, they they against electoral accountability, the first in the history, first in the. Let the people them, their young party, they go against their own party in dictate, where say, the aim and objective of that party, now for make sure say they win power. And then them, 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 they walk towards the goals, the aims, where they set up the party for. Push their ideology through democratic means. We not win power, they not shown us we are win power, we not have this we are win power. But yet still, even when the international community, they help for resolve this issue, we not want label, we not truth come out, what in they hide? What are they hiding? What are they hiding? Pass top so far, listen to other questions.
Alright, okay, thank you very much. So it, it to what in why you say they talk now, it seems the meeting not go for right today. Dr. Samoa Kama and the APC, because Samoa Kama, Dr. Samoa Kama don't write back to the APC for starting clarification. So if you then clarification, indeed, the party not make clarity on that, then definitely the meeting not go right. Because what you we the see now, so to what we do understand, the APC party, they call Dr. Samoa Kama for tell and see, by these elections, you don't don't, law forget about these elections, law move on. Law forget about these elections now, whether electoral justice, no electoral justice, law forget but then the law move on. Because now that we do understand, see, the national executive called Dr. Samoa Kama now the party office for let that the party move on, let them forget about that election day, let them prepare for 2028. And also let Dr. Samoa Kama go and over the office in key. But to me, last year December, Dr. Samoa Kama, we don't left that office as the leader of the party. Now one Nak meeting, if they don't clear, so I not think say you hold any office again, where they talk about the leader now the APC party. So I think say, now that we do understand, because we the talk now with evidence, we don't have for can't talk things that we not to true, where people will find out tomorrow, we not to true. But we understand it, they call Dr. Samoa Kama for make ego forget about 2023 elections, let the party move on. Let them prepare for 2028. Mr. Wari say, last week, we see a lot of audios, they make rounds that the social media, whether they go take security that Dr. Samoa Kama and, they go disarm the security them, all of them things they do. Because what we find out and we investigate a different from what in, where they hear from other people them. So what you think, but that saga they way up in last week with Dr. Samoa Kama insecurity there in the SIA alone police?
Well, People's Power, it has been officially confirmed, or sorry, unofficially confirmed that Dr. Samoa Kama then go take in, or they try for withdraw in security forces without a knowledge, without a notice. Something where they do in an untraditional manner, then they not write to them, they not ask them, they not call them on the phone. In fact, what we learn now that they already disarm, they already disarm the security details we attach to Dr. Samoa Kama before even then they go tell, they say, well, we not go for begin for reports. On Tuesday or Wednesday, we not go for begin for reports now, head police headquarters now. We not go for, they go to Dr. Samoa Kama again. This is a one way, don't, don't confirm, even though unofficially. However, what I have a points out now, now the fact, say, you look at efforts of the APC executive and you look at the moves where Madabiu make, it's similar. Even though we not say Madabiu gets implants for assassinate Dr. Samoa Kama. Because Madabiu know what is coming, Madabiu understand fully what is coming. So the first step in implant for assassinate the presidential candidate of the APC where they in a dialogue with the government right now on the disputed elections. The first step now for ensure see that withdraw the security details from Dr. Samoa Kama without a knowledge officially. So I think say, now another sad chapter, now another sad day, we body politics. Because of the fact, say, we went into a gentleman's agreement, we went on agreement, who say, as gentle people, as civilized people, we signed the agreement for national unity. We bond the trappatite. And that talk they still they go on, yet the government of President Madabiu, they make this kind effort for undermine that particular discussion, for undermine that particular dialogue. For putting place a young plan for assassinate a political rival. Because as we understand, as we be, based on intelligence who they get, that are the only thing we will make this talk at down now, we then assassinate Dr. Samoa Kama, God forbid. We understand saying President Madabiu, they crisscross around the world aimlessly for ensure see they avoid the, the, the foreign delegates. We go for calm now SIA alone, for can look at the, this, this particular dialogue, where they go on, this particular agreement. For can see how far they don't go, for can ensure see then do a final, make a final decision to whatever they go for make around the trappatite recommendations. So I think say, they, they, they are making the same effort, just that Madabiu now ain't get direct security responsibility of every SIA leader. So anything where go wrong with Dr. Samoa Kama, now ain't go be, now ain't go then go hold squarely. That Madabiu then go hold squarely accountable for anything we go wrong with Dr. Samoa Kama in life. So we the warn them, we the warn them firmly for say, they get responsibility. Not to just for adhere to the talks, not to just for adhere to the, the. Not to just for adhere to the details we, we, we enshrine, now then documents that they. However, if for ensure say the security of your opponents, of your political opponents, it guaranteed at any time, based on the fact, say, that state security, those security not to Madabiu in personal security bodyguard. Then they honor in command, because in a commander in chief, but they are state security. Then they, for the serve, they can propose then they. Then people, then, then security forces that depend on body, therefore understand the fact, say. Therefore, provide protection for Dr. Samoa Kama, whether the presidential candidate. And especially at this critical time, where the election dispute talks still they go on. So for we, we are not bothered of the fact, say, now Madabiu. In, we go run, now Madabiu, now in the international world, now in the people of SIA alone, therefore hold responsible directly to whatever. At this point, is vulnerable, at this point, is insecure, at this point, anything can happen to them. So we the warn the government for avoid a catastrophe, something similar to what in happen at Rwanda with the, with president government, with the. Where the, where the president government, we the call on them for avoid that one, we the call on the members of the international community for understand say, this is a situation on the ground in Sierra Leone, and this is the efforts that the government of Madabio is making to derail the ongoing discussion on the. In it's, eh, eh, the trappetite team, I very much really patiently with, and also the line in golf.
Yeah.
So for we.
Yeah, wide, wide.
The fact now that Madabio security for Dr. Samoakama, the government of Madabio get direct responsibility for secure every citizen in Sierra Leone. And the I G, the inspectional police therefore understand this, that the states, the states a responsibility now for protect people like Dr. Samoakama, whether the presidential candidate of the All People's Congress.
Uh, thank you, thank you very much, that voice the way you hear you soon, now Alaji Mohammed, why you see, um, talk a lot of things then, but the letter we, the All People's Congress party sent to Dr. Samoakama and waiting get for due to the security, we go end the program now, so, um, Mr. Why you say, but before we end the program, we just want for um, tell Saloon people and say, uh, the coming of the Ecomog, yes, that one day, I want for assure now say, not, you know, they change that one day. Nothing absolutely, not a change that one day, but me now, the people's power no go tell you the date, the time where they go come, I know it's, you then go come today or then go come tomorrow. But as far as I concern, I no see the Ecomog them with for Kaya, they come see they with for come. The, um, the Echoas then stabilization force we for come now Saloon. That one day, nobody know they for change them, then they come, eh, A P C no more. Then get a lot of arrangements them, a lot of protocols them, what they get for go through. Things that we get for do to logistics and all of them things standing at that and they put in place now. For make then we will see how best then we for push the logistics then they for can on a Saloon, they self go can now, so of course, the base suicide and they can they we were the free term, we were the work on that side and they would see say rapid developments, they go na them business and they decide when a east team suicide gets for candy, decide when a Kegi town and other side them, or returning, all of other side them. We see the way how the one day where they establish them building and they then places that they will see that they go so fast for make sure say, then go dona within a stipulated time where they give them, so that the Ecomog then at that side they then get for can base. So let nobody not come and say, now this, now this, now the, no, 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 no. When they Ecomog then they come, they not get for can hide, not to hide in the eye, they not get for come on a bush. Where they Ecomog then they can say, say, people then go see them playing land routes, then along international airport. Then take them from long international airport, they round route, then car with them, pull local, campus, machine car, they enter inside. Inside fleet, we all go see them, they not to hide in the eye. So now, I want the people and get that one day correct because you go, she don't wake up one morning, people and begin go talk this, talk that one day. Then at the end of the day, they say, oh, now Dr. Samoakama, now I go talk this, all nine people and go talk this, no. The fight of Dr. Samoakama, the fights are for the good of the nation, now for the good of Sierra Leoneans them. And not the fight for his safe, this one would affect so for achieve them, now Saloon people do achieve them, but this one would affect for so asta full life, you fail. Definitely, now the entire Saloon no fail, democracy don't die, now Saloon, and some of us, no go let democracy die. We want to continue for the practice with multi-party democracy, we go lead this country to a success story. So, Mr. Why you say, before you go, you are add to it, you adjust the talks, sir?
Um, thank you very much, your people's power, I think say it is. We make them clear, say, Dr. Samoakama, it's in no way associated with the audio where they make rounds. Um, about somebody where they talk from Rubamba or Usai, you know, I don't listen to that audio, they, um, I don't hear him. And a lot of thing and this side of audio, we for me not make too much sense, however. Um, that now, the, whether true or not, we want for make the, the world and the people of Sierra Leone no see Dr. Samoakama and in people them, nor in any way associated with that particular audio where they make rounds. Um, for anybody get evidence, make it produce for, producer for me. Say, Dr. Samoakama don't ever talk about stabilization force, Dr. Samoakama don't ever mention Ecomog, Dr. Samoak, they not ever mention stabilization force, you not ever mention Ecomog, you not ever mention forces where they come in this, eh, in a salon today, you not ever mention it tomorrow. Yes, people them, we, they in a social media, the bloggers and this and that people them. We, as we do. Listening, a lot of times where people then they talk about dates and time and this and that, not just even the bloggers, even, um, the, the um, A Y V, you know, um, the, the, our coordinator, they all don't mention, not just the dates, then also go ahead for mention the mandate of Ecomcile, so, so anybody who have to be mischievous around and get theirself a blame, but as far as Dr. Samoak and the campaign, uh, and electoral justice accountability in a Sierra Leone concern, we are not in any way associated with that audio where they make rounds.
Thank you, thank you very much, um, family, our photo now, plenty, plenty, thank you, we get to be very, very mindful of the audios they will be listing because some of them people are we, they make the audio they are, they need one. Deliberately at the end of the day, they can say, hey, now Dr. Samoakama, people them, they don't can give it back, they don't can lie. We can understand that things that they are, they happen in politics, we don't get into this game for years. They don't tell we do into this game, yeah, people are, we don't like you, then they come and can't say something for make then give you the bad name, say, you know, this now, why you saying people and so, now then they talk so, now we all know the instincts you feel, we no see plain that they can dona that you feel the. It not possible, let plain can dona that you feel the, of course, because that you feel, you know, the work again, and then they use again. If you tell me helicopter go can dona, they both play, no, they can dona, they absolutely, they come see them, then car one, who they ready for come, then they lad na the long international airport. Not to hide in the eye for can as alone, we all do agree, we all do accept, Madabio don't sign a document. We, that document, they, they sign up through the security agencies, then at this country, security apparatus them. The military, the police, the O N S, the internet, the ministry of, um, foreign affairs and international cooperation, the ministry of internal affairs. All of them people and they now they come together, including Madabio and parliament, now they agree, now they accept say, well, let the Ecomog they come, let the Ecomcile they come. So if you then get for come, not to hide in the eye for come, then they can don't bring, now the long international airport, now they then all they can don't. They can pick them, they would them vehicle them, then go and put them now in destination, so they not need for hide for can now, so certain audios then they long just they, yeah, long just they ignore them, it's, 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 it's plain that they can dona, it's true. Plain that they can dona, they.
Yeah, this is an international, if you like it, I'll, 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 I'll give you my, eh. Coming of, um, the stabilization force, now one way, eh, we, we not get question about them, people not get question about them, however, at the time where they I think now in long raise a lot of call, let me with up, God, that the people, we may the talk to now, and the people who in the cause with the, the fight, tell these people, they not get any reason for doubt. They not get a reason for waiver or for shake of their position. See, democracy will be restored in Sierra Leone. Democracy could be restored. Seems they attached to us, where the campaign, where the fact for ensure say we restore democracy. I don't care what name they, 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 they calling us out there, as far as I know, as far as I'm concerned, and God be my helper. The people's power, I want the people to be confident, see, democracy could be restored. Time, it takes, we will go through a process there, we are getting there. This is not, um, um, anything like, um, a violent revolution, where just they happen overnight. By morning, people are not installing themselves because they get a gun, no. This now process, where they may take through a mediation. For ensure say, it happened for the people of Sierra Leone, it happened, so that many years to come, many years down the line. Nobody, nobody, no attempt for do, what they then do in twenty twenty three around that elections. It will be resolved in the most amicable manner, it will be resolved in the most accountable and transparent manner. So the war come for no say, yes, Sierra Leone is back and we are back for true, and we are back for good, we are back as a real democracy. So let people and all free their, let we and all begin dumping their, 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 their spirit, say, oh, this thing not take too long, oh, this thing. It takes time because it's a process, but we are getting there and waiting them, you know, sign, waiting them to agree. Act now that, the, the fact now that the Ecom, the Ecomcile go for come, we can forget a civilian angle, we can forget a military angle. Then go for can as Sierra Leone, for can help for ensure stability.
Among them as well, police as well.
Economically, politically, Sierra Leone is unstable. Me and you go agree, who are this value, who are the feeling brunt of what they happen, Sierra Leone economically, politically, socially, is unstable. So people are going for come again, for can help we, for stabilize, what you do, because we get, we, we get bad leaders them at the helm of affairs. Now that make we get to this point, because we get bad election, uh, management bodies them at the helm of affairs, that that make we get in situation. So that situation, as the, before we even begin talk about, to the, so. And say, for this sake, this, it's not speaking, picking, it's, eh. Cause in those things doing. So the leader, who now listen to the leader, where you know they, they, they talk verbally, they, that, that. Because people and they, with Dr. Samoakama, they talk to directly, where they listen to them, so we go through tweets, now. On behalf of who are the people of Sierra Leone and who are the struggling masses. As you, see. For, and now, be restored now Sierra Leone, now who are he the talk for, and now who are he the fed for, day and night, so we always say, Dr. Samoakama, for the people. You then, people.
Alright, alright, uh, I will tell you plenty, plenty, thank you, uh, Alaji Mohammed, why you see? Uh, for we can make certain clarification, for we can talk quick, quick one to Saloon family. Uh, family, one for tell now, plenty, plenty, thank you, when I already follow, when I already listen, not forget for follow people's power on Facebook. And a lot of other information then get for the coming, how then they come, now so they make a note on, now so they come and disseminate the information they to the people them, so that mean that the people's power with the poor people's media.